Okay, good evening. It is six thirty-two and we're gonna call the Castle Hills Special City Council meeting to order and a term of quorum is present. Quorum is present. We have Ms. Danes joining us via Zoom out of an abundance of caution for her health and ours. So we appreciate you taking that precaution. First up, we have invocation by Mr. Pinkston.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, I just want to thank you for the gathering of people who are here tonight and those who are still coming into the room and, and just pray that the council tonight, well, first of all, just to thank you for them, their service to the people of this community, their heart and sacrifice in the time they're laying down to tend and to take care of us as a community. Thank you for the spirit that there is rising in our community and the fresh wind and positive things that are going on, the transformation around our city, which is so encouraging. We thank you for not only the council, but the city staff, Ryan and his endless work and all those who work with him for your protection and, and our respect, Lord, for the fire and police departments and the way they serve this community. There's a covering of protection around here that is amazing because of their work and just as we step into this evening, help these men and women to see what they need to see, know what they need to do, know what they need to know, to be able to do what they need to do as they just collect collectively express their wisdom and their votes for the work ahead in building the greatest community in South Texas, maybe the galaxy, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Pinkston. Captain Wagner, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Thank you, Captain. Okay, first up, we have a couple of important recognitions. You know, obviously Castle Hills is all about community, but realize that we need to do a better job of recognizing some of the stars in our community. And one school in particular that's near and dear to me is Antonian. Not just Antonian, but these are the ones that could be present today. We also plan on recognizing valedictorians from all the schools as their schedules allow. First up, we have Ms. Gabriella Peterson, who I understand had a GPA of one oh four point four, which is incredibly impressive, and she will be going to Texas A&amp;M in the fall. Mr. Paul's money went to Texas A&amp;M as well. And really proud of being, on top of being a stellar student, you're also a leader in the community. Principal Me and explained all of what you do. So on behalf of the City of Castle Hills, we wanted to recognize your efforts and wish you the best of success in College Station. Okay, next up, we have the Antonian High School's ladies softball, ladies Apaches. They just won TAPS Division One state title, which is no small feat. I know that it takes a lot just to get to that point and to win. So thank you all so much for putting Castle Hills on the map in a positive way and for everything that y'all do. We have a small token of appreciation for all of your hard work that hopefully y'all can display in the school proudly. Thank you all so much for being here with us so that we could recognize you and your successes. The best of luck to you. Next up, we have citizen comments. Do we have anybody signed up for non-agenda items? Okay, we will proceed to the consent agenda. Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council adopt the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. May. Have a second. Mr. Joyce.
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Mr. Joyce. All in favor? Perfect. Ms. Ms. Danes, if you want to just raise your hand when you're giving us the perfect, that'll make it easy. So unanimous. Next up, we have discussion and possible action on awarding a contract for depository services. Mr. Rapley.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm here to present the recommendation to award the contract for our depository services. The city has been with IBC for over ten years and its best practice is to solicit depositories about every five years. In April, the city sent RFPs and we received three, Plains Capital Bank, Lone Star, and Frost Bank. Our financial consultant scored and ranked, have copies up there on the dais for you, based on requirements and specific services. As a result, she scored Plains Capital Bank as the highest. We have representatives from this finance institution here. If you have any questions, I appreciate the mayor and council. This has been on the to-do list for a while for our financial office and hopefully that working with Ms. Davis will try to make it a smooth transition from, from one bank to another for all of our financial needs, being general fund and special funds and array of others of our financial portfolio.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Council, Mr. Joyce.
Mr. Rapley, has the bank confirmed that these prices provided in the information you gave us are correct?
Yes, and I believe that Ms. Clarkson had already, originally Ms. Clarkson, when she made the notes, didn't have that copy from the first one, and she since did because we had to mail her a copy of it. But she's since seen and recognized it. And I've spoken to the representatives who are here from Plains Capital Bank and those, those prices still stand.
Okay, thanks.
And as you can see in the scoring, the large part was cost of specific services. So they were obviously the most competitive out of her rank and scoring of the matrix here.
Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no other further inquiry, I move that the city council adopt the city banking depository to be the Plains Capital Bank.
Thank you, Mr. May. We have a second by Mr. Paul. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, unanimous. Thank you, council.
Mayor, I don't know if you want to hear from representatives or not, if you have any questions, but before we close it out.
We have representatives here from Plains Capital.
We have Rosemary Stagel and Alvin Schenk from Plains Capital.
Well, you know how we voted, but if you're here, we'd love to hear from you if there's any comments you'd like to make.
We just, we just want to say that we're very honored to serve your city and we have little buffalo squeezy's. We'd be more than happy to bring them over to you. But, but yes, we, we definitely take our role as service-minded employees with our bank seriously and are available for any questions to any of y'all as y'all need them.
And Mayor and Council, as you can see, obviously, we went out, changed the language to go outside of Castle Hills. But any bank in Castle Hills on the second round of RFPs did not apply. I think the closest location is just right down the street next to Renasant Plaza, next to Papado's, I believe. So that's about two miles from here.
Perfect. Thank you all so much for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have discussion and possible action on the proposed FY twenty twenty-three budget calendar. Mr. Rapley.
Thank you, Mayor Council. As they say, it's that time of year again. We're ready to start the, the budget process towards adoption. Attach in your packet is the budget calendar. We'll be having workshops in late July and obviously work towards the adoption of levying the tax rate and adoption of the budget in mid-September, which is pretty consistent with previous years. We've gone through the adoption process of the annual budget.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Do we have a motion? We have a motion by Mr. Paul to accept the budget schedule as presented. Do we have a second? Mr. Joyce.
My second.
Second, do we have a discussion? Yeah, Mr. May.
I just have one question for purposes of planning. The the fact is that we try to front-load this, and if we have the need for additional sessions, those usually are toward the end. Which one of these are conceivably gonna be mooted out because we'll get through the calendar early?
Mr. Rapley.
As far as within the schedule?
I, I think if, what I'm understanding is we had the issue last year or several years ago where we blew the deadline. So I think you're just trying to determine that we have the buffer in there?
That's correct. My concern is simple that if we can do our work efficiently, we front-load this rather than leave it to the very tail end of the summer.
Yeah, if Mr. Schnall would like to comment on anything, but right now, the way it's presented to have our tax hearing and then our budget hearing is within the days that we're by state law. But I mean, we, we, I think we have adoption as September fifteenth. So if something comes up, we do have a couple of weeks to fluctuate in between there, give or take five or ten days here. So I just said, no, if any council member had any conflict with any of the scheduled dates, because we do have workshops if needed, if we need to modify our discussion during any part of the budget process.
I, I do have a hard conflict on one of those dates. It, it's toward the end. That's why I asked the question. It's an out-of-state convention where I'm an executor and I must be present, and that is August the fourth, which is a Thursday, which I think is at the tail end of our workshop process.
Yeah, I believe that's when I submit the proposed budget, if I recall. Obviously, no action by a council needed. And then Tuesday, the ninth, which would be the regular council meeting, is where we would discuss the tax rate. So again, that would just be a special city council meeting on Thursday, the fourth. If you had missed Councilman May, we just have to make sure that no other council members missed that date, correct?
That's why I'm up here.
Okay.
Because for the special meetings and for the meeting when you actually adopt the tax rate, the quorum is four members of the council, not counting the mayor, not three. So at that meeting on August fourth, if Mr. May cannot be present, hopefully all the other, the other four members of the governing body will be present and the meeting can be, be held. That, that the, it's, it's not a formal, it's not a requirement that the budget be presented to the council before it's posted and delivered to the city secretary. It's just a best practice. And it is important to get the, the preliminary budget or the proposed budget to the city secretary in a timely fashion.
Yeah, we actually have adopting the budget tax rate everything on Tuesday, September thirteenth. So there is, you know, a few weeks in there as a cushion.
Mr. Rapley, I have a conflict on the twenty-first. I'm already scheduled to be out of town. Do we have any latitude there?
For July twenty-first?
Yes, sir.
We could possibly shift to administration court, police department. I mean, worst case, we could do back-to-back a Tuesday, Wednesday night there. That being Wednesday, July twentieth, if necessary.
Counsel, are you, are you amenable to that? Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
Since a motion was made to adopt the, the budget calendar as presented, someone will need to make an emotion to amend the calendar to change that date from Thursday, twenty-one July to Wednesday, twenty July. Vote on the amendment, then vote on the calendar as amended.
Thank you, Mr. Schnall.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion that we move the scheduled twenty-first of July meeting to the twentieth on a Wednesday.
Thank you, Mr. May. And then a second by Mr. Paul. All in favor?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I just had a question from Mr. Rapley. Wanted to clarify, it's not related actually to the dates of this. Mr. Rapley, I seem to recall in previous budget cycles where we've been going through this process that, if I remember correctly, that you've said that our fiscal year aligned to a calendar year is an anomaly to how most government entities or municipal governments work. Do I recall that correctly? And can you provide any context to why we do things the way we do? I know that last part probably.
Being here for four and a half years and comparative to working for four or five cities over the previous fifteen years, they've all been based on starting your fiscal year on October first, ending September thirtieth. I'd probably say, if I had to guess, you know, nine, eight hundred cities, probably almost all of them have that. I haven't not found another city that has a calendar year fiscal. In talking to a couple of our financial consultants we have, even when Ms. Figgins was here, there is a possible way to do that. We would actually have to adopt a budget that would be short-term, ending on, I believe, that date and then starting a new one. So essentially, we'd have to go through two budget adoption processes. It does make it very difficult. I've been during the auditing process, especially because of our ad valorem revenue that we received in what would be the first quarter of most cities, we receive it in the fourth quarter. So our auditors have to go back and make that adjustment. And then being aligned with state and federal helps with grant purposes and so on. You know, I could defer to Ms. Tedford. She's worked for a number of cities and I don't recall if you've ever had it on a calendar year. Yeah. So maybe Mr. Schnall has some background on how to do it.
I may have helped Kirby do it, but I don't remember how. It was that long ago. I, I will tell you, Mr. Isbrand, of the four cities I represent, two are have, have fiscal years ending September thirty, beginning October one. One of them has a fiscal year ending October thirty-one, and its new budget year starts November one. And as Mr. Rapley said, Castle Hills really is out there on its own. And I think it is a challenge for staff in that situation because other cities, when they're in the middle of the budget process, already have good information about the first six months of their, of their budget year. Mr. Rapley is only gonna have the first six months, not the first nine months. Those other cities have nine months of experience. By June thirty, we'll only have six months. And so it's, it makes it more challenging for staff to, to do a budget. It can be done. It is complicated. And we, I, I remember we did have to work with accountants to make sure that, that we followed all those steps. Probably too late to do it this year, but not too late to be planning to do it in, in twenty twenty-three.
Essentially, essentially, like Mr. Schnall's correct, we would be, you know, essentially nine months in, almost trying to put together and have a better accurate of the proposed budget going in towards the adoption of next year. Gives a better reflection of really where we are because, as Mr. Schnall says, we only really get six months going in to put together an annual budget.
Yeah, and I remember at this, this is the exact conversation I believe we had last year saying, we need to plan next year to think about this. And time races by and here we are again. So obviously, we're moving forward with this year, but I hope that at a future council meeting, we could put this on the agenda so that we have the time to thoughtfully considerate, take into account Mr. Rapley's comments, Mr. Schnall's comments, and determine whether for the next fiscal year, it would be appropriate to move in this direction. Thank you for letting me ask that question.
Ms. Danes.
Thank you. I did have a question about the calendar.
Hold on one second, Ms. Danes. We can barely hear you. Let me see how to get fixed that. Can you try that again?
Yes. Can you hear me now?
No, worse.
Worse. Okay, I may have to chat. I may have to type it in my chat.
Oh, that's perfect.
Um, okay, let's see how fast I can type.
That was perfect. If you want to type it in by chat, we can read it there.
Okay, well, I was just gonna say since, can you hear me?
We can't hear you. We need you to type it in chat and I'll read it.
Not sure, Mayor. The call-in's all the way up.
So you have a conflict on August second. You wanted to know if we can move it to August. We have a conflict August fourth. You want to see if we can move it to August the second. Mr. Rapley.
That might not be an issue. I'm just looking at the dates because there's a certain amount of dates, correct, Mark, as far as filing the budget?
I don't think the two days make a difference.
Okay.
We just need to make sure that we don't have something we should do.
Okay. I don't think it's an issue, Mayor, but like Mark said, maybe zoning. But if we put this on the calendar now, we may be able to adjust zoning by then, depending on if there's something for publications or, or. Yeah. But I don't see it as a problem. We'll go ahead and move that.
Okay, I guess we need a motion to do that.
Did the council vote on the First Amendment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then yes, then you need a, an amendment and a vote.
I thought we voted all the way. I'm sorry. Okay, so we have the First Amendment to change it to to July twentieth from July twenty-first by Mr. May and a second by Mr. Joyce.
Mr. Paul.
By Mr. Paul, I'm sorry. All in favor? Okay, that's the amendment. I think we have another amendment coming up here. Mr. May.
I'll make that motion that we move the projected August fourth special meeting to August second. That would also, just so everyone knows, it would obviate my conflict on the same day that Ms. Danes has.
Okay, Mr. May, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Mr. Isbrand, thank you. All in favor for the motion? Unanimous.
So just so we're clear, Wednesday, July twentieth will be the special meeting, third budget workshop, correct?
Yes, sir. Okay, is everybody good otherwise? All right, so now back to the original motion. Is that correct, Mr. Schnall? Or do we need to go through?
The original motion as amended.
The original motion as amended.
And it does not need a new motion. It's right back now for, for action by the council.
Okay, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. Next up, we have discussion and possible action on repealing ordinance number twenty eighteen dash zero seven dash ten dash A and adopting ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero six dash one four, amending chapter two, division two, section two dash five six, regular and special city council meetings. Mr. Isbrand.
Mayor and council, I'll call this a housekeeping matter. This was a previous city council in twenty eighteen had moved the May meeting and made it the only month of the year when city council did not meet the second Tuesday of each month. Having that consistency obviously helps to keep the community informed and when we're doing our business. So this would be the housekeeping to return that back to a first Tuesday of May meeting each year. And I would move that we approve the repeal of ordinance number twenty eighteen dash oh seven dash ten A and adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh six dash fourteen.
Mr. Isbrand, you mean the second Tuesday in May?
I'm sorry, when, did I mistake that?
You said first Tuesday.
I beg your pardon, the second Tuesday. The intention was to provide clarity and I provided ambiguity there. I apologize. The second Tuesday.
Mr. May, with that, I second that.
Okay, we have a second. Do we have a discussion? Okay, before we vote, I just want to add that I think this is a good way to get back on track. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. Next up, we have discussion and possible action to direct the zoning commission to review the city ordinance related to the regulation of massage parlors and similar businesses and to provide recommended changes, if any, to council for consideration. Mr. Isbrand.
Mayor and council, you're likely aware of the business that's planning to open in the nineteen hundred block of Northwest Military Highway as a spa. I've been approached by a, a number of residents as well as members of our business community, and it's to ask questions about it and it's prompted questions from them about the density and operation of these types of businesses in our city. So whenever I receive this kind of feedback, I believe it's incumbent upon us to look into it. With that in mind, I very informally took a tour of the city, encountered about eight or nine businesses here that promote themselves as offering massages, foot massages, or otherwise call themselves spas. I don't say that that is a firm number, but simply what I observed. In my observations, for a city that's just two and a half square miles in size, that does seem to be a lot. It's not my intent to make any kind of broad judgments about the nature of these businesses, but it really does beg the question of why they choose to locate in Castle Hills. And I believe it relates in part to our ordinances and how, how they are regulated. So I, I think first, it's important to acknowledge the difference between a massage parlor, which is referenced in our current ordinance, and massage therapy. Massage therapists are required to complete hundreds of hours of training, pass multiple tests, are state licensed, must carry insurance, are required to complete twenty-four hours of continuing education every two years as part of their license renewal. The massage parlor industry, without question, has its share of reputational issues. And that has the potential, I believe, to reflect on the image of Castle Hills and our ability to foster economic development here. And that's part of what was shared with me by members of the business community who, who, who came to me to have discussion about this. We also know that there have been some instances in the past in Castle Hills where arrests were made for illegal activities at some of these businesses, although I acknowledge that these were several years ago. When I looked into the city ordinance and began comparing it to ordinances of some other cities, here's some of the things that I noticed. First of all, our ordinance is relatively brief and among other things, although it defines what constitutes a massage parlor, it does not constitute what is a spa, what defines a spa. This leaves a lot of room, I think, for ambiguity or question there. Likewise, there's a lack of clarity about how massage parlors and/or foot massages and spas are differentiated in terms of regulation. Looking at some other cities, as part of their ordinances, I noted that they prohibit massage businesses with one thousand, within one thousand feet of liquor stores. We do not, as we can note from where this new business will be located. Many cities have requirements regarding the amount of storefront window space that may be blackened out, or what portion can be used for display signs and images at these businesses. We do not. And in fact, later tonight on our agenda, we do have an item related to signage issues somewhat related to this. And the point with that is that it becomes a public safety And the point with that is that it becomes a public safety issue. Some cities require massage parlors to log the names and ID of clients as a way of ensuring the integrity of the business. And the protection of employees who work there. So these are just a few examples that I've noted in some brief research on this. The intention here is to give us a better understanding of the density issue we have and why that is compared to other cities. So my proposal tonight is to ask for your support in referring this to the zoning commission. And request that it conduct an assessment of our ordinance, those of other cities, and then bring back to council recommended changes, if any. I believe that this review can actually be beneficial to our business community and to reputable spas with highly trained licensed therapists. Who want to locate to Castle Hills. So I'll make a motion at the appropriate time, but I'd pause here to invite any comment.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand.
Mayor and Council, I do have a, a written comment from a citizen that submitted, was unable to make it tonight. Um, the message is, uh, from Mr. Saul Arispa. My name is Saul Arispa and my family, Arispa Properties LTD owns the shopping center called The Pavilions. Of Castle Hills located at 1931 Northwest Military Highway. Several of my tenants at our shopping center have brought it to my attention that a massage plus spa type tenant is opening across the street from us. Specifically, they are concerned about the signage it's allowed to have on the, on the building. Do not want to see anything that says massage, the clientele that it may bring to the area, the number of similar establishments in this, in the immediate area. Apparently this will make the fourth within the city of Castle Hills on Northwest Military Highway. As the landlord, I'm in support of small business and filling vacancies, but not at the expense of leasing to, to businesses that degrade. The appeal and trade area of Castle Hills and causes my tenants to, to, to want to leave. Pavilions of Castle Hills in the past, oh, excuse me, to want to leave the city, the pavilions of Castle Hills. In the past, I've been approached by these types of businesses, but have turned them down because they tend to offer other illegal services. Which ultimately hurts my center and the immediate area. So I'd appreciate any and all help in monitoring this business across the pavilions. And helping to mitigate the type of signage and advertising they're alive, they are allowed to put on the building and in the windows. I spoke to Alderman Isbrand, CC'd on this email about this matter this morning and hoped to attend your upcoming meeting. Next week, either in person or by Zoom. I look forward to your reply and working towards a solution on this matter. Regards, Saul Arispa.
Thank you, Ms. Teford. Mr. May?
I just had a, a comment. I, I'm not opposed to this at all, referring it to the zoning commission, but I would encourage us. To look at, you know, surgical changes, not, uh, blunt, uh, force prohibitions, because I think we're gonna run afoul legally. Uh, messaging obviously is the most important thing. Uh, it's not bad for our city to be known. As the most pampered citizenry in the country. Um, it might be even good to be known as a place that. You know, you can get a good reputable massage when you need it, therapeutic. So I would just encourage the zoning commission. To look at the legal aspect of this. Obviously, we're gonna have our city attorney, uh, collaborate in that process, I would hope. So, um, that's what I'm looking for.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Joyce?
I think it's a good idea. And, uh. I think maybe staff could help perhaps, uh, cause it would seem that maybe a starting point would be an inventory. Uh, and some of the qualifications of the different types of parlors or spas, whatever they might be. So we know which are licensed and which are unlicensed so that the zoning commission has good data to start with, but I think it's a good idea. And, uh, I concur also with Mr. May's comments.
Mr. Paul? Um, I just want to add that I have full faith in our zoning commission to look at this unbiased and see if there's opportunities for us.
Thank you, and Mayor and Council with those comments, which I appreciate very much and concur with them. I would move that we direct the zoning commission to review the city ordinance related to the regulation of massage parlors and similar businesses. And to provide recommended changes, if any, to council for consideration.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. May, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you, Council. Uh, Mr. Isbrand, would you mind taking over while I go outside and clear, clear my throat?
All right, the, uh, next item is, uh, agenda item 6.5, discussion of possible action. On an assessment by the police department and the city's engineer on the feasibility of lowering the speed limit on residential streets. With the city of Castle Hills to 25 miles per hour. This is my agenda item. I'll ask Mr. May perhaps to join me in this discussion. Um, I, I will say that this, I bring this up because they're probably the item I am most asked about. Or asked for assistance with in this city is can you do something about speeding? Can you do something to find a way to reduce the problem we have of our streets used as cut-throughs, cut-throughs? Whether they be Jackson Keller to Blanco, whether they be Northwest Military to Lock Hill Soma. In fact, it turned out that both Mr. May and I separately were actually assisting a resident here with concerns. That are taking place over on Antler, Hurwick and that area. And I believe Mr. Rappley actually has information regarding the assessment there. When these things first, uh, uh, came up, when I, when I first came on council, I'll admit freely that I looked at them as one-off situations. How can we address that circumstance? But as I see the pattern of more and more of these. Uh, I've come to believe that it might be very beneficial for us to do some kind of unified assessment of the situation. And determine whether, um, the speed limits that we have in place are correct. As you know, you can go down one street that's 30 miles an hour. You go literally to the next street over and it's 25 miles an hour. So these are some of the things that have come up in the discussions I've had. Uh, Mr. Merrill surrendered the chair back to you, but want to recognize Mr. May for his comments.
Mr. May?
What Councilman Isbrand has just said reflects, uh, the fact that I've received probably more calls on this over the past two years. It's never risen to the, uh, I think the higher level of priority, but I think it should be explored. And I think there's, uh, wisdom in having conformity in all the residential streets. The only exceptions would be the main thoroughfares, which would be the ones like Northwest Military and West Avenue. Uh, I have done my own observation of what it feels like to go 30 miles an hour. Both driving and then observing from being a pedestrian. And frankly, 30 miles an hour or more is a little scary on a residential. Uh, street. So I am very much in favor of looking for an exploratory analysis of how we can do it. We all need to be aware though, it's about enforcement and the ability to enforce and citizens. Expect a police officer to be around every single corner when they need the police officer to be there, but we all know that that can't be. We can't, we can't cover the city like that. But I think merely, again, this is another instance of messaging. And I think I would be in favor of a uniform, uh, speed limit on residential streets.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Joyce?
Appreciate the comments of, uh, Mr. May. Yeah, I think certainly it's worth looking into. I'm not sure that every street needs to be the same. Speed. And the reason I say that is something like, um, Honeysuckle, for example, which is. Sort of a cut-through street. It's recognized as a connector street in the comprehensive plan. And so as you know, it goes from all the way from here at City Hall all the way down to Antler. And, um, but it is lined on all sides, all the way down with houses and there are kids playing there. But it just, it just seems to me the street like that is sort of a hybrid and perhaps be treated a little differently. I don't know. But an assessment, I think, is a good idea. And if our, uh, police officers have some thoughts on the matter, I think that would be most helpful. But speeding, just to. Speeding is the number one complaint that I hear myself for the last couple of years, any, almost anywhere in the city. But it's over in the Lock Hill Selma Military area and that area, whether it's down by Jackson Keller, Antler and Hurwick. And, uh, even on Honeysuckle as well. So, uh, yeah, it's definitely something we should look into.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Mr. Paul?
I agree that the, would, would be best served by letting the engineer in the police department decide. Cause they certainly experience it and know it. Biggest problem our city has is its location. It's not a problem for us, but we have developed or acquired over the last. Probably eight or 10 years, so much drive-through traffic. They use West Avenue, they use Military. They're not citizens. I guess I'd be willing to bet that 99.5% of the people. That are doing these issues are not citizens and. They need to be, but they won't be using, there'll be some using the cut-through residential streets. And I don't see a problem with all those streets being uniform also. And like you said, that the connector streets. Police Department will know what they are and of course, Honeysuckle is a major connector street as we know it to the city. So, uh, I think this is a good idea. We've talked about it for a while. We do have some mixed signals, uh, you know, we, uh. Right now, I think was Fox Hall is 25 miles per hour and, um, some of the other ones are 30 and. We need to be uniform. I agree with that.
So, um, I just want to add that back, several years back, we did some studies on walkability and we had some people from the Elm area Metropolitan. Planning organization at the, getting it right. Um, they came out and what they told us is 20 is plenty is the saying. And in that 20 to 25 miles an hour, it's almost identical for means of transportation. And so you're not really losing a lot by lowering five miles an hour, but you are gaining, uh, substantial amount in terms of safety. For pedestrians, uh, that five miles an hour makes it a little bit easier for a car to maneuver. So I guess the point of all this is I think it would be a great idea to see, uh, a study be done and see if there's opportunity for us to improve. From what I've seen, uh, the majority of streets are 25 already, so if. And if you're, you're giving me a look, Mr. Isbrand, but if there's, um, streets that are not, then I would say that it's worth having a conversation. Uh, Ms. Danes, I'm sorry, you have your hand raised. You want to try your audio again, see if you work?
Yes, let's see. Hang on. Okay, um, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Go for it.
Hey, I changed my audio and that worked. Maybe.
Nope, we can't hear you now.
Okay, how about that?
I'm in agreement that it needs to be looked into. I think the uniformity will make it easier for residents and police to enforce limits. That's actually a great point as well.
If, if the residents know that it's always 25 or 20 or whatever the decision is, they don't have to be looking for a sign. They just know what the limit is.
Yeah, that's, that makes perfect sense. Mr. Rappley?
Thank you, Mayor Council. Um, as Councilman Isbrand alluded to, we, we recently had two streets, um, looked at by our traffic engineers. Through RPS and they actually did a study, the data to call into account for Hurwick and Antler. And actually, it warrants changing the speed from 30 to 25 miles per hour. The city would, you know, obviously incurred a cost for this review, but it was done as a study correctly using the universal manual transmission. Excuse me, traffic code and everything, same as Tech Todd in every city uses from that standpoint. Now, if we asked on a case-by-case basis to have a street evaluated, it might cost us, you know, um. Our funds, a, a small amount of funds, I guess, from our general engineering to do an individual study. It might get upwards and talk to our engineers if we want to do a comprehensive study of all our streets around 25, 30,000 for comprehensive look at it. But I think in this case, we can do case-by-case now, um, and Mr. Schnau can correct me and. I'll also have Captain Wagner jump in on the enforcement side, but, um, we can post 25 miles an hour. Um, unless posted otherwise, uh, a number of cities have that currently. Um, if council wanted to do that, the cost of doing that would be getting the additional signage throughout the streets because. Um, and I'll let Captain Wagner speak to that. There's got to be a certain amount of signs on that street for enforcement purposes.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Paul?
I think that. Generically, like all the ones in the terrace, all the ones in, uh, the South Cone, all the ones. They're all generic to the same type of traffic. I don't think we need to do street by street. Plus, I think that would be a little bit, well, am I 25 on this or am I 30 on that? If we, I mean, and I just think it needs to be a set policy for all the streets, connector street. We only have two or three of them, West Avenue and Military, of course, are, uh, uh, highway, uh, Texas Highway Department. Or TDOT. And I don't think we have any control or say over that anyway. So I think we can make this pretty simplistic. We just make it, need to make a decision to make sure we're going to the right direction. And that's what I think the police department can tell us. That's my opinion.
Uh, Captain Wagner, if you have any input? Again, we could have our engineers determine exactly where these signs need to be, how many feet, but there would be a cost of the signage and material. Captain?
Um, as far as the, uh, stance of the police department on this, um, we're all about enforcing, uh, the speed in, in the residential areas. We don't want to see a pedestrian get hit by a motor vehicle at all. Um. The, um, the only thing we're asking for is, is if council decides to do a 25, that it be universal and it be clearly posted on all the streets. The prime facius speed limit, uh, by the transportation code for the state of Texas is 30 if it's not posted. Uh, we can probably remember that from when we took our driver's test. Um, so if, if a motorist does not see a sign, you know, they're, they're gonna drive 30. And it's not ethical for us to enforce a 25 i- if it's not clearly posted. So that, that's what we're asking for. I do feel that a, a 25 mile an hour speed limit will get the voluntary, uh, compliance of motorists. On average, the speeds will be down in our business and that's what's most important.
Thank you, Captain. Okay, um.
Man, make one of the comment and then I'll make a motion if, if we'd like, is, uh, I think the conversation that we're having tonight is really healthy. Because on the surface, this, I think people said, this sounds like a good idea. This is what the, the public wants. But there are a lot of factors that go into this, which is why I don't think this is something that as a council, we should sit at this point and take action. But rather, um, solicit public input definitely at the right time, perhaps have public meetings on this. But to my motion, what I, what I would move is to direct the city manager to work with the police department. And the city's engineer on the feasibility of lowering the speed limit on residential streets to 25 miles an hour. And as part of that, for the city manager to bring back to us the cost assessment for these, uh, for an engineering study. Any other applicable expenses so that we could view this holistically.
Was that a motion, Mr.?
That was a motion.
Okay, perfect. Do we have a second? Uh, we have a second on Mr. Paul, all in favor? Okay, unanimous, thank you, Council.
Just so we're clear, Council, a cost as far as what comprehensively the study would look like and or. What it would look like if engineer assisted in how many speed limit signs we need in certain streets.
Uh, the, my intention with the motion would be all of the above.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Mr. Joyce.
Sorry, uh, just one quick comment. Um, is it reasonable to think that maybe we would evaluate two or three streets per neighborhood? If there are six neighborhoods in the city, two or three streets, just to make sure we have the comprehensive look without overdoing it. Just a thought.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Uh, 6.6, receive a report from Fire Chief Emergency Manager Coordinator and take possible action on preparations for severe weather incidents. And power disruptions, including installation of emergency generators at City Hall and establishing a protocol for the dissemination of emergency. And community information, Mr. Isbrand.
Uh, Mayor and Council, you'll recall after the, the great freeze that the city council established a committee comprised of several council members. The chiefs, uh, and the fire chief as our emergency management coordinator, city manager. And others to assess our readiness. As a result, proposals have been brought forward and purchases made for generators and the like. Some of which have gone into place already. Um, we've already seen this summer, the intensity of the heat we're having. And reports of ERCOT's challenges with it. So power disruptions, you know, remain a potential threat for us. Um, and, uh, we're now in hurricane season too, and although we don't typically have hurricanes that make. And we're now in hurricane season too. And although we don't typically have hurricanes that make their way up this far. We certainly have the offshoot of them, whether it be tornadoes or other severe weather. Felt given these circumstances, it would be appropriate time to request that we get an update on this and asking Chief Ladwick as our emergency management coordinator to. Be able to give us an assessment of where we stand on our readiness and hardening our facilities.
Mayor Council. As Councilman Isbrand said, that the committee was established and we worked to identify the needs for emergency management. Obviously, I'll have the chief go through the updating and the management, emergency management plan. And then also look at what we might need this coming budget for future emergency management needs in the event. Also, the iinfo alert system obviously is working, but I've talked to the chief. He has some ideas about how we can try to improve that notification system to residents. And then I'd just like to recognize that, you know, we got a number of dumpsters. Because a lot of residents had dead foliage because of that. And I want to recognize Chief Ludwig because he worked to. Get a grant through FEMA and get our reimbursement for that. We haven't got the funds, but we got notification that we will be reimbursed for it. So Chief Ludwig.
Okay, Mayor Council, city staff, residents. As Councilman Isbrand brought up, that we had the committee that we put together after the winter storm. We had recognized first off that we needed to do a complete review and updating of our basic plan and our annexes. As you can see, we've, that's been completed. This is our new. Our new operations plan for the city. Now, the key thing is it's going to be disseminated to the. Department heads and the individuals that are responsible for those annexes. They'll fine tune those and they'll come up with their priorities as they see fit. As we work towards getting better prepared for any upcoming incidents. And also, now that we're coming up to budget season, maybe to looking at what type of funds that we need to set aside for emergency management. We recognize some priorities at the meetings that we had. First off, of course, were the generators for city hall and for the fire station. I was in contact with the contractors. Like many other things, there have been delays on deliveries. But I was assured that at the end of this month, they'll start breaking ground on the pad site for the generator for the fire station. And unfortunately, part of the generator for city hall is in. But we're still awaiting the generator delivery date would be September second is what I'm getting at this moment. So. I'll stay in contact with those contractors to make sure that we're getting, that we're staying on task. And that they do know the sense of urgency for us to get these installed. Also, we discussed storage of, you know, needed supplies for incidents. Had a visit with the contractor. We're looking at in about thirty days, they'll start construction behind the fire station for a twenty. Twenty by fourteen storage that allows to store some salt, sand. Some additional supplies for if we have a a need to actually have a shelter established. Water, some of the other things. We did make some additional room in the fire station. So we could keep the water inside a climate controlled facility. So we'll transfer some of the things that we moved out of our storage into the storage building that's outside. I actually talked with representative from iinfo today. She agreed to come in and talk with Xena and I about. Different features that they offer. Also, if we can make it easier to have information. Uploaded into the iinfo for dissemination. If we can have more users, I'd like to have the dispatch office be able to, because they're. The ones that are here twenty four seven, they have the information, they know what's going on. If for some reason, we don't have the abilities to get to a computer. You know, they obviously can take a phone call and be able to put out the information either from the mayor, city manager, myself. Any of the city staff that we set up a protocol. So we know who can send out information and how this information is going to be sent. This past, the beginning of this month, they, the Texas Department Emergency Management had their conference here in San Antonio. I attended that. There are some other options for emergency notification. There was one in particular that I was impressed with because it does offer more options to our residents. It offers an option that they can download an app to their phones or to an iPad. And it makes information to them much more accessible. Now, like anything else, you know, the more money you put in it, the more options you can you can have, but. You know, we we definitely want to make it as easy as possible for our residents to. Be able to get the information that they need and make it accessible. So I've talked with the city manager about pursuing and talking with his company and seeing what type of financial commitment and what. What options they offer compared to what we have with iinfo. Also, I talked with, they do offer a program through the Texas Division Emergency Management. To assist local cities in identifying your high risk and your residents that are in need. People who may be disabled, have harder problems getting outside of their homes and so forth. And the program, it's called steer. And you have to become a member of, you have to apply through the Texas Division Emergency Management. But they assist you in identifying these residents for you. And I know that was a key thing. Back during the winter storm was us trying to figure out which residents that we may need to either. Pay a visit to or ask them if they need assistance, getting prescriptions, food and so forth. And through this program, they will assist us in doing that and recognizing us as a. A certified data collection center for these individuals. And it gives us three options. Either we. We can do a link on our website and they can actually log in, go to that link and put in all their information that they want to put in. Secondly, there's, they can call in just two one one. It'll get them directly to the division of emergency management and they can give their information over the phone. Or there's also a form that they can fill out that we can keep here at the city. Or if we recognize these individuals, we can go to their door and and offer this program to them. So. I think this is a good program for us to pursue based upon what we witnessed during the winter storm. It would also help us in. Any other flooding, hurricane, tornado situations. So again, I'll I'll talk this over with the city manager and ask God's approval also to pursue this. And finally, one quick thing, I did get to sit on one workshop with, it was put on by the. Texas A&amp;M University Veterinary Medicine Organization and they've come up. With an emergency veterinary response team. And they will responding in case of emergencies and emergency incidents, but what they'll also do. Is a lot of times we get so involved in tending to to our individuals and the residents of our city. We forget about the four legged friends that come along with them. And a lot of the different emergency management coordinators I've talked with in in times of incidents and disasters. There's a big issue with trying to find places for the animals of these residents. A lot of the residents won't evacuate. Or they tend to go back to their home sooner than what they they should. It just causes a lot of logistic issues. Texas A&amp;M will actually send a team out here. And look at your facility and look at ways that you can address these emergency issues. Either temporary shelters, stockpiling of kennels. Designing an emergency shelter either by trailer, conex box, all these different things. And pretty much they don't come in and tell you what you need. They come in and ask you what you want. And I think that would be a good thing for us to kind of, as we move forward in addressing these these emergencies. Offering something like that to our residents. If we're going to start using some of our facilities as a shelter. It would be good to have something for them, someplace that they can put their their animals during that timeframe. So again, I'll I'll talk over the city manager about having them come out. Along with with Rick in in public works and since we do have a shelter that would quickly become overwhelmed if if we had an incident here. So that was some of the things that I've I brought back from the conference to the city manager that I like and to discuss with him and. And go ahead and try to move forward with these with these things. And then as we get to the the budget discussions, talk about the funding for these. And lastly, he was correct about us receiving approval for reimbursement from some of the costs that we. Incurred during the winter storm. We're looking at about eighty eighty eight hundred dollars in in funding that will be recouping for. The dumpsters for the debris and some of the overtime costs that we incurred during the during that time. So. Any questions, sir? Yes, sir.
Do we have a percentage amount? Do we know how many people in Castle Hills has taken advantage of our current emergency system, alert system?
Well, reviewing the dashboard on iinfo, they let. And you probably know a little bit more than more about it, but looking at it. On they can pick and choose on what they want to be notified for. And I think the highest number we had was about two hundred and twenty nine. Residents that had chosen that one. And I think it was for emergencies and public safety notifications. And then different amounts for others. So I I don't know the the exact percentage.
The obvious net is the expense on. The additional, you're going to come back with that, I know, but thinking about additional expensive, in fact. Not that many people are using the system. That's all I was getting at.
Correct. And that's why also too, I was looking at some of these other emergency notification systems because. They do do a little bit more as far as promoting and getting the word out there and also. Possibly make it, make it a little bit more easy for these people to get their information. That's why. You know, if they had an app on their phone or something like that, even if the person themselves weren't able to. Do it over their phone, they could have a relative of of son, a daughter, or somebody else that could actually go online. And enter the information for them. I know the one that I was talking to right off the bat. They will use the public records database for anyone who has a landline. To automatically upload all of that information into your your account in your program. Automatically. So you have that access to those people right away.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, thank you.
Next up, we have item six point seven, discussion and possible action on ordinance number twenty twenty two dash zero six dash one four dash A. Amending section forty eight dash one thirty seven of the code of ordinances to add provision declaring it unlawful. And a public safety hazard to allow vegetation to grow as to obstruct any legal traffic sign or device. Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor Council. This actually is is a tweak. We are amending in our our code of ordinance under vegetation. Right now, we don't have any enforcement if if there's vegetation or obstruction to a stop sign or signage. Right now, for anything that needs to be cut, I would say in the right of way from from that standpoint. And it's ensuring we have a clear line of sight of our signages. And it's mainly due to vegetation. And right now, this would allow for enforcement purposes. For us to notify the homeowner to abate the vegetation. Technically, if you have any questions, I'll defer to Mr. Zamarone. We, this is something that he's been wanting to do. And this will also help Rick and Public Works as well.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Mr. Joyce.
Mayor, I move that we accept ordinance number two two oh two two dash oh six dash fourteen dash A. Amending section forty eight one thirty seven of the code of ordinances.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Do we have a second? Second one, Mr. Paul, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Council. Next, we have discussion of possible action on an ordinance number twenty twenty two dash zero six dash one four dash B. Amending section thirty four dash two, thirty four dash six and thirty four dash nine of the code of ordinances to revise the definition of sign. To add a definition of window sign and to amend previous. To amend provisions concerning temporary business signs. Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor Council. This is obviously amending the section for signage. As Mr. Isbrand mentioned earlier about signage in the window, there's a, there's an element of both aesthetic and public safeties from that standpoint. Has the two components. This is something that other cities have in place. It's just what percentage. You want to have in the window. And I think ours kind of mirrors the city of live oak from that standpoint. And so. That's kind of what we're going with as far as mirroring that code for that city. And I think it's about seventy percent, but. Again, I'll defer to Mr. Zamarone if you have any technical questions. And then there's also a component about human signage that we've also put in place here. So.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley.
I wonder if we could hear from Mr. Zamarone on this to get a little bit more detail.
Yes, sir. Mr. Zamarone.
Good evening, Council. Yes, sir. So there are a lot of tweaks that are that are proposed under this particular ordinance. Some of them having to do as a city manager discussed, window signage. It reduces the amount of signage that's available for businesses to advertise to fifty percent of the available window space, including glass doors. There's also a definition of what a window is. And like I just said, that also includes glass doors. Further, there are some other tweaks that are occurring in this particular ordinance. One of them has to do with human signage. That's the the very. Distracting things that you may see in San Antonio and other cities where someone's on the corner twirling a sign. Or or things of that nature. We don't have anything that stops someone from doing that. And in my my years here. I've actually had one incident where the individual did not step into the right of way. So he's not. Doing any type of violation soliciting from the right of way. He was on a sidewalk and he was just fine, but that didn't make him less of a distraction. In my years of my twenty plus years of being a police officer, and I'm pretty sure the captain will be able to concur with this, that a distraction is a distraction, whether it's momentary or. Hanging out in the corner twirling a sign, a distraction is distraction. Currently, we don't have anything prohibiting that activity. That's that tweak. The other tweaks that you see in there is that that I don't know if you have the redlined version or just kind of the condensed version of a couple having to do with. Actual temporary business signage is there. The practice, when I got here many years ago. Was actually coming to an end and that was the city was giving out the frames for temporary signs. For businesses, for real estate, whatever the case may be. These signs were being held with a twenty dollar deposit. So as soon as the individual brought the sign back, they got their twenty dollars back. Talking to Rick last, I think, a couple of years ago, as a matter of fact, when we were fabricating those signs, those signs are somewhere, correct me if I'm wrong. But their signs are somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty to seventy five dollars to make. So they were walking. And the city manager at the time told me, we're not doing that anymore as a practice. Because those those frames are walking and we're losing in the order somewhere twenty five to thirty five, forty five dollars each hit and we were taking a hit. Since that time, the the fat in that ordinance that kind of puts the burden onto the city of providing those frames has never been pared down. So that's this part of the ordinance in front of you. It's paring down that language and not making it a city practice. You know, our feet could have been held to the fire and somebody could have said, hey, you know, I'm going to need one of those fancy. Those frames and it's only going to cost me twenty bucks and we would have had to accommodate them. This puts the burden exactly where it is in practice over the last years that I've been here and it is on individual is putting the sign. The last part of this ordinance, the tweak to the ordinance has to do with placements of signs. There were situations in in my past here where I could not enforce it way back when I was a code officer. I could not enforce someone having a, for instance, a political sign. Not in the in the ten foot setback on, for instance, a text dot road. But say eleven feet. And it was causing a significant obstruction to traffic at an intersection. I personally had to pull out, for instance, on Northwest Military in a particular side road. And obviously, I've relied on my training over those decades of being a police officer. Had someone been coming down Northwest Military a little quicker than than forty miles an hour, I would have gotten hit. Trying to clear the intersection. This addresses that. The language that you see being thirty by thirty foot triangle comes directly from already established code that was, I think it was, if I'm not mistaken. Was established in ninety five, having to do with corner lots, uh, having vegetation over eighteen inches. Uh, if they're if they're on a corner. That language, this is not uniquely, this is not unique language. This is language that's been gleaned from an already existing code. So there is no different standard. Uh, and I think that's pretty much all the tweaks that we have in assigned ordinance.
Um. Ms. Resbrand, any more questions? Okay, um. So I I have one question. Uh, for thirty four point six or thirty four dash six, it references more than fifty percent. Do we know how many businesses? This is going to affect and the businesses that have maybe fifty or seventy five percent, are they grandfathered in?
So that that's a legal question, but from my experience with Mr. Schnall, it it they are grandfathered in, unless we can make it retroactive. Then that language stays. It's going forward. Any business that is not existing under a C of O that has already been passed that established is subject to that fifty percent or less. Of total glass space, including glass doors.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other questions, Council?
I I do have one other question, if I might. If we were to adopt this tonight, what is the um, either public notice or legal timeframe before it would take effect?
Caption uh, in a in a publication and also um. You have caption in the publication, but I'll let Mr. Schnall speak to that.
We have the option, and as drafted, this ordinance says. That the ordinance shall be effective today if it's adopted today. Uh, with the city manager directed to arrange for publication of the caption in a local newspaper. Um, if the council wishes to defer the effective date. Then when a motion is made, the motion should include amending section seven to state a different effective date than today.
Thank, thank you. I would, uh, Mayor and Council, I'd move adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty two dash oh six dash fourteen dash B. Amending sections thirty four dash two, thirty four dash six, and thirty four dash nine of the code of ordinances.
Okay, we have a motion on Mr. Isbrand. Do we have a second? Mr. Joyce?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion, we have Ms. Bay, Ms. Danes.
Yes, I just wanted a quick, can you hear me?
We can't hear you.
No, can't hear me?
No, ma'am.
Um, can you read my chat?
Oh, we, you did something we heard a little bit and then cut out.
I just wanted to know about the human sign.
Can't hear anything.
Mayor, would it be useful if perhaps I called Ms. Danes, if you have your cell phone? And I could hold it up to the uh, speaker here, would that be helpful? Sorry, I didn't um, think of asking this earlier.
Hello.
Hello.
Yes.
I'm not really loud.
I just had a quick question on the human signage. Those people have to stay out of the right of way.
Well, it would actually be a prohibited practice.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, do we have any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you, Council. Uh, next up, we have discussion of possible action authorized the city manager to enter into a contract with Intermountain Slurry Seal. To perform street maintenance work as a part of the city of Castle Hills Street Maintenance Program and authorize city manager to execute the contract, Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Um, this is actually the final phase of our micro surfacing uh, for the maintenance. Uh, the city, obviously, we've done about twenty five streets over the last two years. Um, with the micro surfacing. Uh, in two thousand nineteen, the city established Interlocal with Bear County to be able to um. For purchasing service to obtain these low price uh, construction materials. Uh, in two thousand nineteen, we developed in conjunction with the CIP, the Street Maintenance Program, which outlined um. Close to about thirty two streets that needed to be um. Are needed either the seal code and or um, the micro surface and. These next, I believe, eight streets here that are on the list. Um, are eligible candidates for the micro surface. We budgeted two hundred and fifteen thousand this year, and the quote for the micro surface from this company is a hundred and eighty one thousand. Um, they did the last two years for the micro surface. I think they did a great job. Um, with the the maintenance program of our streets. And obviously, this is to address uh, and ensure the integrity of our streets. Um. We will also try to bring forward another contract, maybe next month. Uh, we're going to look at doing some seal coat. On some of the streets that are in very good condition. Uh, those have been outlined in the CIP and recommended by our engineers. Intermountain will also be uh, doing that service as well. So I'm hoping to work up a contract. When they have their crews back in the area, they were performing work for the city of San Antonio. And they will be back to work for the city of San Antonio, so I'm hoping to obtain their services to be able to get those. Uh, we're looking at probably the end of July, um, early August for this micro surfacing. And uh, just so Council has it, we have aerial maps in the back there. And it's been outlined for Fox Hall, portion of South Winston. Um, our engineers are recommending to do that section of West Avenue, a double course there. Um. And I see. See there. And I know I'm missing one street to be exact. All right, I'm trying to find that street. Mr. Rappley. Yeah, Buckaroo and um, it looks like the other section of Atwater there after the reconstruction we've done from Buckaroo up to Blanco.
And Mr. Rappley, this uh, Interlocal agreement is similar to what we've done in the years past, correct?
Uh, this is a five-year agreement we've had with the county. Uh, we renewed it in two thousand nineteen and expires two thousand twenty three. Um, we've used this ILA um, to have Intermountain do the last two years with micro surfacing for maintenance.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rappley. Uh, do we have a motion, Council? Yes, sir.
Mr. Rappley, if my memory serves me, two thousand seventeen. We were going to micro seal and take care of West Avenue, I believe it was with Intermountain also, wasn't it?
Uh, I'm not sure, Mr.
You weren't here, I know, but. But uh, it council was going to do it, and then the council came in in eighteen, and then they. Chose not to, but it was all the way up to uh, uh, Northwest Military and then some to Lock Hill somewhere. Is that what we've? This this paper doesn't show it very well to me.
Yeah, Mr. Paul, so I can just bring a little bit of history to that because. Uh, I know it was already in the budget, um, and I've talked to Mr. Harada about this when I first started. But um, there was um, money in there to do the micro surfacing of West Avenue. However, VIA had not come in and put the concrete pads down yet. And um, I was not going to uh, allow that to be done till VIA finished. And so the next year, uh, essentially, we lost some revenue for streets that weren't in the budget because of the adoption of the previous council. Um, but right now, we're going to be able to do that section. Now, our engineers are saying that that. It's probably a little bit more than just micro surface from Northwest Military down to four ten. That it's probably going to be a greater need, like closer to a mill and overlay. Uh, from that standpoint, based on the um, condition of the street.
Yeah.
But right now, uh, doing a double course of what they call surface for uh, Northwest Military to Lock Hill. Is going to take care of that section in this project. But um, a- again, uh, Councilman, uh, getting here early, I was not going to uh. Uh, put down any type of application or maintenance without uh, VIA doing what they did because they would have just tore it up. Um, give or take, yes. Yeah.
Do we have a motion, Council?
Mayor.
Mr. Isbrand?
Uh, Mayor, I'd move that uh, we authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with. Intermountain Slurry Seal Incorporated to perform street maintenance work as noted in this.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion, Mr. Isbrand, a second by Mr. May. Any more discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, Council. Next, we have discussion of possible action on appointments to the zoning commission. Mr. Isbrand, I'm sorry, Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Um, at this point, um, I think it's place um, one, three, and five have a selection of new appointments based on this past election. What? I'm sorry, one, four, and five, sorry. Sorry, not yet, Councilman May. So one, four, and five, and then I believe as it states, uh, correct me, uh, Mr. Schnall, that the mayor chooses the chairman again. Um, or reappoints whatever uh, his purview is on this, but uh. And then um, as Councilwoman Danes coming aboard, she has the opportunity to select her board members. Um, for these as well as uh, Councilman Joyce and Councilman Isbrand at this time.
Okay, uh, Mr. Isbrand.
Yes, sir. Um, uh, Mayor and Council, it's my pleasure to uh, appoint Kristen Bengachia as zoning commissioner.
Okay, and Mr. Schnall, that's a direct appointment that doesn't require a confirmation?
Uh, yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I think for the record, if you could spell the person's name for the city secretary, or does she have it?
Yes, I've, it's been provided. Thank you, Mr. Schnall.
Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, Mayor Council. I would like to reappoint Mr. Juan Solis to the zoning commission.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. And Ms. Uh, Danes.
I would like to reappoint Mr. Charles Jackson to the zoning commission.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Danes. And I will reappoint uh, Mr. Solis as zoning chairman. Uh, next up, we have discussion of possible action on appointments to the Architectural Review Committee. Mr. Isbrand.
Uh, Mayor and Council, it's my uh, privilege to appoint Anna Freyas to the Architectural Review Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Mr. Joyce?
Thank you. It's uh, my privilege to reappoint Mr. Barry Middleman to Architectural Review.
Ms. Danes.
I would like to appoint David Kilgore, who was an alternate to be the place five Architectural Review Committee member.
Thank you, Ms. Danes, and I will reappoint Mr. Middleman as zoning chairman. I'm sorry, Architecture Review Chairman. Um, next up, we have six point one two, discussion of possible action and appointments to the Board of Adjustments, Mr. Isbrand.
It's my pleasure to appoint Cassidy Olivares to the Board of Adjustment.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Mr. Joyce?
I would like to reappoint Mr. Bruce Smiley Caleb to Board of Adjustment.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Ms. Danes?
I would like to reappoint Bernard Gettymeyer to the Parks and Projects Commission.
Uh, we're on the Board of Adjustments.
I'm so sorry. Um. I do not have an appointment at this time.
Okay. Um, I will appoint uh, Mr. Smiley Caleb as the chair again, reappoint. Okay, next, we have six point one three, discussion of possible action on appointments to the Parks and Projects Commission, Mr. Isbrand.
Uh, Mayor and Council, it's my privilege to appoint Cindy Martinez as Parks and Projects Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Mr. Joyce?
I would like to reappoint Mr. Clyde Skip McCormick to the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. And Ms. Danes, I think we know, but go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I would like to reappoint Bernard Gettymeyer to the Parks and Projects Commission.
Thank you so much, and I will appoint uh, Mr. Gettymeyer as the chair of that as well.
Uh, Mayor, we'll, we'll bring back uh, the appointment for. Uh, Councilwoman Danes' appointment for Board of Adjustment, and then if there's any alternates that need to be selected, we'll bring that back next month.
Please, by all means, and for anybody listening, um, if you're interested in serving as an alternate, please reach out to us to let us know the alternates actually. Come in more often than not, uh, with, you know, schedule changes. So uh, your your service is greatly appreciated, and as is everybody else that's serving. Thank you so much for the work that you do to. Keep our city moving forward. Uh, next up, we have announces the mayor and council members and items of community interest, Mr. Isbrand.
Uh, Mayor and Council, first of all, I would like to thank uh, Mr. John Herndon for his uh, service on the zoning commission previously. As well as my thanks to Ray, Mr. Ray Schultz as uh, for his service on Parks and Projects Commission. And lastly, I'd say I am highly confident that I speak for every single person in the city of Castle Hills. When I express our deep appreciation to the police officers and firefighters who responded to the incident. On Blanco Road and four ten on Sunday morning. I think it's hard for any of us to imagine the uh, the situation that they found themselves in, particularly with our firefighters who. Who worked so diligently to save lives here and to our police officers who worked so aggressively to investigate this. Anus crime, and we're deeply grateful to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Mr. Paul?
Though she's not here, I'd like to officially uh. Tell Ms. Danes that we're happy to have her and uh, be a part of the uh, council. And we look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. May?
And piggybacking off of that, uh, we had some scheduling issues on meeting count the new council uh, person. Uh, night, which uh, we put on hold for COVID. So I did get a commitment from the owner of Sushi Hana to use the back room, and that would be on any Wednesday. So uh, the two dates that I have circled would be June, the twenty ninth, Wednesday night at seven. And Wednesday night, the sixth of July, uh, same time. Uh, Ms. Danes, would you have a preference?
Yes, my preference is the sixth of July.
Okay. Done. Um, and your predecessor worked uh, directly with me on an ethics code for the.
Mr. May, we want to keep it clean. We don't, we're uh, non-agenda items here.
Oh.
Announcements only, Mr. May. Announcements only.
Announcements, okay.
Okay, I read your mind, Mr. Schnall.
All right, all, that's all I have.
Mr. Joyce? Ms. Danes? Nothing? Okay, um. I just want to thank uh, CHCO for putting on on an amazing splash day event. Uh, it was very, very hot, and everybody that was in the water very, uh, they were enjoying themselves cooling off. Uh, thank you so much for everything that y'all do for our community, and thank you to uh, our first responders. We had a small brush fire. On the San Antonio side last week that uh. Castle Hills Fire Department was ready to jump in, fortunately, they didn't get to that, but uh, chief came in. In the middle of the night, and we put eyes on the issue, and I'm grateful for your service, chief, and. Uh, to echo of Mr. Isbrand's comments, uh. Thank you all so much for everything that you did uh, on Monday. I know that, or I'm sorry, uh, Sunday. I know that that was uh, an atrocious event, and uh, I I'd like to uh, make sure that we keep them in our. In our prayers, and I'm glad that we have. Uh, the full support of Castle Hills to find the people that uh, did this to our community. Uh, Mr. Rappley?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just want to thank Council after um. Completing two major capital projects with the Banyan Carrollwood Phase Two and then. Street One improvements, we're wrapping up both those projects. Uh, we'll be doing a punch list uh, accordingly with engineers, inspectors, and contractors. Over the next week or two to try to close out both projects. Um, culmination of those is, you know, roughly about four million dollars worth of drainage and street improvements to Castle Hills. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley, and the congratulations, Council. That's all done at the helm of your leadership. Uh, that being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Joyce, all in favor? Unanimous at eight oh one, meeting is adjourned. Everybody have a good evening.